Now, would you like to stand for the prayer and the pledge, please? Pledge and leave it to the flag.
The United States of America and to a republic of the same, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, tonight I have a very exciting opportunity to honor one of our own citizens, Chris Harrison, for an act of heroism that has garnered national attention. One second, Chris inside the building. His family are still outside. There he is, Chris. Chris, would you like to approach City Council, please?
Dayton is 1.9 square miles and contains many different aspects of things from businesses, buildings, schools, and homes. But what makes Dayton very special is the people that occupy these buildings, the people that we call our neighbors. And Dayton, Kentucky is lucky to have neighbors that we do, the kind of folks who will go out of their way to help a neighbor with their yard work, their groceries, or in extreme cases such as we see today, to save a life. We have known this all along, but today the country has taken notice. Today, we are lucky to honor Chris Harrison with a nationally recognized Carnegie Medal. This medal is chosen to be awarded by the commission of 21-member board, who look at stories of heroism across the nation, and choose a select few that will receive these awards if they meet the requirements set forth. And that criteria is, the rescue must be a civilian who knowingly and voluntarily risks his life to an extraordinary degree. On the night of November that Chris ran into a burning building to save his neighbor's life, Chris certainly met that criteria. On the front of this medal bears the image of Andrew Carnegie, and on the back the words, "Greater love hath no man than this, the man that lays down his life for his friends." So tonight, it's an honor to be able to present this award. On behalf of the Carnegie Commission and Chris, it's an honor to represent Dayton in saying thanks for being a great neighbor.
That's pretty awesome. We have some honored guests in the crowd tonight. I'd like to introduce Senator Will Schroder.
Well, I am Senator Will Schroder, and I have the pleasure of representing Dayton. And it's an honor to be here and recognize you, and just wanted to present the Senate Citation, "The Senate of the Commonwealth of Kentucky to all these present shall come greetings. Knowing that Chris Harrison is recognized and honored for demonstrating extraordinary bravery and quick thinking in the most critical time of need when he ran into a neighbor's burning house in Dayton, Kentucky after being awakened by a man yelling for help. Despite seeing flames inside the house, Mr. Harrison forced open the door and entered crawling approximately 18 feet to a man who was lying unresponsive on the floor. Mr. Harrison bravely dragged the man crawling backward to the door where others helped him to safety. Inasmuch, Chris Harrison demonstrated laudable courage, selflessness, and skill which most certainly contributed to the life of a false citizen being saved. He has offered sincere commendation and gratitude for phenomenal effort put forth and those most worthwhile endeavor. His extended best wishes for continued safety and success in the future. On motion, myself, Senator Will Schroder is hereby deemed by this honorable body most worthy of its recognition." Thank you so much, Mr. Schroder.
Chris, it's amazing what you've accomplished. You really changed a person's life, and that's really something. That's bigger than any award that you possibly could get. And from the bottom of our heart and all the city of Dayton, we really appreciate what you've done, and your heroism is just phenomenal. To not only go one time, but to go twice into a burning building to save a fellow man is incredible. And I want to award you with the highest citation of appreciation from the House of Representatives on behalf of myself and Speaker Osberg, who want to thank you. Thank you for making us all be proud of Dayton.
Thanks. And Chris?
Thank you.
Oh, you got a lot of... Well, it's hers. I do great, but... I'd also like to award you with the key to the city of Dayton, Kentucky, for your heroism in bringing another Dayton, Kentucky out of the fire and saving their life. You're a true neighbor, and we're proud to have you.
I didn't expect all this. I wish I'd addressed for the occasion, I guess. I was getting ready to go to the backyard and cut grass. I didn't expect all this, but thank you very much.
Sir, hold up, Dennis, come on.
Senator Schroder and I are just so thrilled to be part of this. We greatly appreciate you letting us share this moment, and this is really special. You know, I got my start in Dayton, and I know what this means. You know, so many people don't realize what Dayton's about, but Mr. Harrison is Dayton. And what you all do is, we just are thankful to have you and what a great city that we have around here. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Certainly one heck of a way to start off a council meeting, isn't it? We now like to open up the floor to audience present participation. So if anybody would like to approach council, please settle to the podium, announce your name and your address. Kathy.
Kathy Volter at 336 River Point Drive in Dayton. I have a question, and I know it's been ongoing since I was on council meetings ago, that being the sidewalk safety grant. Any idea on when we'll have a safe walk for people on Dayton Pike?
Kathy, we finished up design, but the project has been stuck in moving from design to right-of-way. We have hired a right-of-way company, but until the state gives us authorization to proceed, we're kind of stuck in the middle. But it's something we're following up on weekly, just one of those things.
Why I bring it up is just this weird. Three times I've seen kids, one who looked like he was six years old, walking Dayton Pike a little short time, and he had on dark clothes during the day, you could barely see him, and he was walking, probably what you shouldn't do, but on that street you'd have to do it. He was walking on the side where there was at least a little ledge that you could be crushed against a guardrail, but at least, you know, you would be seen coming around the bend heading north. I think something... And then twice I saw a young boy, probably 10 years old, pushing a lawnmower up Dayton Pike two days in a row, walking in the line on the middle, in the middle of the road. I guess he thought that was his safest route. I mean, something needs to be done, and quickly. Maybe we need to see if Dennis can help, Dennis Keane can help us, because, mark my word, it's gonna happen. Some kid's gonna get hit, if not a kid, an adult. So I hope you can put some pressure on the powers that be.
We'll do our best, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy. Anyone else? Mr. Henry.
Hello, my name's Gordon Henry. I just wanted to announce that I have recently taken over as the executive director of the Dayton Housing Authority, and looking forward to getting involved in the city of Dayton and be a, bring awareness to the group. If anything that I can help with, just let me know. And also, too, we are looking for a maintenance person to fill that role. So if you know anyone who has a maintenance background or is interested, just feel free to stop by the Housing Authority between 8:00 and 4:00 on Monday through Friday to talk. Thanks.
Vincent? Anybody else in the crowd that could address council? Okay, with that, we'll move forward. The mayor's report. I also wanted to welcome Mr. Henry to Dayton Housing Authority. It was an extensive search that we did, I think it was like 65 resumes that we went through, and Mr. Henry came highly recommended from different cities for his work in Cincinnati and his work in Newport. So we're very excited to have him as the director for Dayton Housing Authority. It's an important job, and we're sure he's gonna fill those shoes very well. I wanted to mention that we've been working with Crest Construction and South Bank Partners. We've been making a lot of great strides on the Riverfront Commons area, which is the space which is just north of the homes of the Manhattan Boulevard. So we'll soon be having a opening of that space for a running and biking path, walking path if you're not running, jogging path if you're not walking, and be able to go down there, and it's right next to the river. It's on the north side of the home, so you'll be right on the river. I also have one other thing I want to mention tonight, is a lot of us don't like to work on our birthdays, but one of us did today, and that's City Administrator Michael Giffen. So, Michael, I wanted to present you with a card for working late on your birthday, and I got you a small gift here as well. It's small, but I think you'll appreciate it.
You want to open it?
Yeah, good for you.
Cadbury Eggs for Days.
You're welcome. He loves himself some Cadbury Eggs.
He will share. Absolutely.
I tell you, it's not easy to find Cadbury Eggs in June, but we found them for you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate you.
Moving along, Donna, we'd like to make approval for minutes from the May 7, 2019 meeting.
I'll make the motion to approve minutes for May 7 meeting. Second?
Motion's been made by Mr. Henry and the second by Mr. Volter. Do we have any comments? Can we have a vote, please?
Yes. Member Lynn?
Aye.
Member Volter?
Aye.
Member Neary?
Aye.
Member Basler?
Aye.
Member Cornett?
Aye.
Member Burns?
Aye.
All ayes have it, passes. Now, we'll move along to the second reading, 2019 number 12, Compensation and Number of Authorized Positions for Employees Under the Dayton Job Classification System.
City of Dayton, Kentucky, ordinance number 2019 number 12. An ordinance amending ordinance 2018 number 5, setting forth compensation and number of authorized positions for employees under the Dayton Job Classification System. And that is the second reading.
Second reading's been made by Ms. Donna Ledger. Do we have a motion?
She'll move. Second.
Moved by Mr. Volter and seconded by Mr. Lynn. Do we have any comments?
I do, sir.
Yes, sir.
I think we're shortchanging public works. I know we have a part-time position open for public works, we're having trouble filling it, but just looking at the workload on public works, we have so many city-owned properties, parks. There's comments over the past couple of days about maintenance of some of our streets and alleys. I really think we need to add another full-time employee to public works, or look at outsourcing cutting the floodwater in the spring season.
Yes, sir.
I would agree, we need probably another employee, or at least, instead of a part-time employee, add a full-time employee.
According to this...
Yeah, I did. So I added an extra, moved from two to three approved positions. Those are approved authorized positions. It doesn't necessarily reflect how many employees we have. So under labor, we have two labor positions currently filled. I moved that to three. And then I also looked at the potential of looking for somebody maybe with a little bit more experience as a crew leader, so that's something that hasn't been filled anytime that I've been here, but I thought of changing that to one in case we want to advertise for maybe a more skilled position. So it just gives us some flexibility in that regard, if we want, you know, if we want to go down the path, we don't have to come back. The reason I have it doesn't matter. So we do have that flexibility.
Michael, how does this reflect in the budget that you're gonna come up with?
None of it is reflected in the budget, so if we do decide to hire another employee, we just have to go back and...
Any other comments on the second reading? We have a motion to approve the second reading of 2019 number 12. Do we have a roll call, please?
Member Volter?
Aye.
Member Neary?
Aye.
Member Basler?
Aye.
Member Cornett?
Aye.
Member Burns?
Aye.
Member Lynn?
Aye.
Member Volter?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Now, we have the first reading of 2019 number 13, The Adopting of the Annual Budget for Fiscal Year 2019-2020. Ms. Ledger.
City of Dayton, Kentucky, ordinance number 2019 number 13. An ordinance adopting the city of Dayton, Kentucky's annual budget for fiscal year July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020, estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the city to the full extent authorized by KRS 82.082 and interpretive case law. And that's just the first reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I know we usually don't comment on first reading, but I really feel that we need to take a hard look at the budget and see if we can afford increasing the percentage of salaries further than what we have. I'm just, you know, we're continuously losing employees, we're hard to get employees, and if we can catch up, we need to start catching up, if we can afford to do so. I'd like to do some comparisons and see if we can't raise the salaries even further than 3% across the board, which is what we, you know, looked at. I would like to see us even raise it higher if we can afford it, because we're losing good people every year, every six months, we're losing people. And we're retraining those people, and it's just taking us, you know, it takes us longer to get that competent person back in the saddle again. So that's just my take on the issue. I'd just like to see you and Michael and the finance committee, you know, go into a depth study. It doesn't mean we need to hold up approving the budget, but we can certainly go back and amend it if it takes us a little more time. But I certainly would like us to take a hard look at it.
Do we know it?
Thank you.
Again, that was the first reading of the budget ordinance. Moving along to orders, 2019 number 6R, Approval to Enter Into an Agreement with the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security.
City of Dayton, Kentucky Municipal Order Number 2019 6R, A Resolution of the City of Dayton, Kentucky authorizes a mayor to make application for and upon approval to enter into agreement with the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security to execute any documents which are deemed necessary by the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security to facilitate and administer the project and to act as the authorized correspondent for the project. This resolution also establishes procurement policy for any course approved project for the fiscal 2019 application cycle.
This order requires a motion to accept the approval to enter an agreement with the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security. Motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Mr. Lynn, seconded by Ms. Cornett. Any comments? Can we have a roll call, please, Donna?
Member Neary?
Aye.
Member Basler?
Aye.
Member Cornett?
Aye.
Member Burns?
Aye.
Member Lynn?
Aye.
Member Volter?
Aye.
The ayes have it. The second order we have is 2019 number 7R, The Resolution Supporting the Ohio River Valley Sanitation Commission.
City of Dayton, Kentucky Resolution Number 2019 7R, A Resolution by the City of Dayton, Kentucky supporting the Ohio River Valley Commission Sanitation Commission, whereas the Ohio River Valley Water Sanitation Commission was established June 30th, 1948, to control and debate pollution in the Ohio River.
We'll need a motion to accept 2019 number 7R.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Basler.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Volter. Donna, can I have a roll call?
Yes. Member Basler?
Aye.
Member Cornett?
Aye.
Member Burns?
Aye.
Member Lynn?
Aye.
Member Volter?
Aye.
Member Neary?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Moving along, we now are all into the administrative report. Michael Giffen, could you please give us your report?
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a few things. Handicap market request, 722 Fifth Avenue. The applicant meets all qualifications, has stepped forth on the ordinance, so I'd like to ask for a motion to approve 722 Fifth Avenue.
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Ms. Cornett.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Burns. Do you have any comments? Donna, roll call.
Member Cornett?
Aye.
Member Burns?
Aye.
Member Lynn?
Aye.
Member Volter?
Aye.
Member Neary?
Aye.
Member Basler?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Second thing I have is from a special event application from First Baptist Church in Dayton. This is something that comes through every year. They request June 7th, 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. What they usually ask for, and are asking for on this, is closure of Dayton Avenue on the north section of Fifth and Dayton to the alley on the kind of this central portion of that block. As I mentioned, it's something that they've done every year, their annual block party, so I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the special event application.
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Ms. Cornett, seconded by Mr. Burns.
If you have to make a comment, make sure if they need any sources or anything, which city can be involved with it.
Roll call, a second.
Member Burns?
Aye.
Member Lynn?
Aye.
Member Volter?
Aye.
Member Neary?
Aye.
Member Basler?
Aye.
Member Cornett?
Aye.
Been a few just housekeeping cleanup things from last meeting. We had a resident that came in, spoke at our last council meeting, was asking for us to look into the sightlines for Sixth and Vine. If you recall, her daughter was in an accident at that location, and was concerned that there was a car that was parked, but she wanted us to look into maybe extending that yellow line. Rick Lupis and I took a look. There's a tree that's actually causing most of the vision issues, so extending the yellow line really wouldn't clear the area too much. It would help a little bit, but I think most of it is coming from the tree. So I just kind of wanted to give you all an update. Not really recommending to take the tree down or save it at this point, I just kind of wanted to give you all an update on just what I was assessing.
Is the tree on private property or on the street?
It's a city tree.
Can we trim it back, develop the situation or not?
It's not. It's more of the height, the branches that are low, so I don't think trimming it would help, it would probably... My recommendation would be either to just keep it and continue to monitor it, or just give it away. I don't think trimming would do...
If it's a safety issue, I'd be for it. That's just me. I'm just, if the tree is blocking the vision, maybe causing some of those issues, I'd rather take the tree down than have another car wrecking somebody here.
Is the tree small?
I don't think we'd be able to save it, just 'cause...
You're not thinking of putting the yellow line back further, would you?
Well, we could at least dissent. If the tree was down, we could assess it further at that point, and maybe we could extend the yellow line a little bit more, but at that point, I think the tree is causing most of the issue, whether a van's parked there or not. The branches ain't pretty low, and that's what's causing most of it.
Which side is the tree on?
It's on the south side.
The devil, yeah. Move to the south.
It's on the south side.
So she was having the problem going north?
Well, she was traveling east, the person was turning, going north.
I'll make a motion to review the tree for safety issues on Sixth Avenue, if that's what you're asking. I would probably make that motion. Whether it wants to second one or not.
Motion's been made by Mr. Volter.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Henry. Any comments?
I mean, I would like to see for myself when we go cut down the tree, because if the tree just grows taller, like we have a nice mature tree, like we want to have on our main street, if we give it, I mean, I pull out of, I live at Sixth and Vine, and I pull out of there, and I, I mean, if people are going too fast, that's when an accident might happen. I think bump outs and different measures to make people go slower, it will prevent any accidents. The sightlines really end up being from parked cars, and you have to edge out past the parked cars. I've never had a problem with the tree being in my way, so I would be against cutting down any trees.
I'll say the same thing. I go up Vine probably every day, and I don't think I've ever had an issue with the tree. It's just you gotta mosey on out.
I can see with a tree is a problem, but I also can see where you put the yellow line back further, you're gonna upset some citizens there saying they can't park there. So this is a touchy situation for us.
If you all want to take some time on this council and maybe look at it...
I'll withdraw my second. I'll rescind my motion until we look at it again, but you're telling me that you and Rick looked at it, and you feel the tree's a safety issue. And Scott, I will say this, yes, it'd be nice for that tree to grow and be mature, but if there's a wreck there next week because that tree's blocking the sight, that's a problem.
Like I said, it's most of a car issue. Like, I'm there every day of my life, and I've never been like that tree.
We'll take a look at it. Just take a, all of us take a look at it, and then we'll come back and see.
I'll send an aerial and highlight, just so you can make sure we're all the same age and what tree we're looking at.
So we'll take a look at that for next month or so. What motions have been rescinded?
Second thing I wanted to touch on is, a motion was made, I think it was passed through the members of my council to take a look at the Sixth and Berry intersection and do a trial period for flashing light. I have reached out to KYTC, and we submitted a request. The last I checked into it was either yesterday or Friday, I can't recall, but they said it was still being reviewed. I followed up two or three times, so I just wanted to let you know that we've submitted it, we're just kind of waiting for them to do the...
Did we get, you know, that said that they were, that they were looking at it themselves, so they didn't want us to do anything?
They didn't say what they were looking into, other than they just said that it's been submitted, it's being reviewed. I don't know what the review is gonna entail.
So they were in receipt, right, of our request?
Yeah, they received the request, and it was...
And I'm kind of fine with that, because we asked for 90 days, and if we go into July, the end of those 90 days will be the school starting, so we'll be able to see both summer traffic and school traffic, how it affects it.
That's the update on that. And the last thing I said, the mayor touched on it a little bit, but if you haven't got a chance, go down and take a look at the work that's being done on the river for Riverfront Commons. I met with the engineers and construction crew today on site for a few last-minute challenges, but they, right now, weather pending, they're hoping to have it open to the public by the end of June, so we'll have just under a half a mile of our trail open to public. It looks really great, they've done a good job. We may need to do a little tree trimming to enhance some of the views down there, but it's great quality, and you're gonna have some really great views, really hot down there, exposed to the elements, but just to follow up on that, we're expected to go into phase two design this summer, and hopefully, construction on phase two this time next year, so we'll kind of be on the same, we're hoping to be on the same kind of construction cycle where we'll be starting early next year. We also do have funding secured for Phase Three, which we'll complete it. Little unsure on that timeline, it may be, there may be a year gap there, and we don't go into construction until 2022, but it's very exciting, and if you get a chance, go down and take a look, and if you want to get adventurous and go down, do so quickly before you get run off, but it's really exciting for Dayton, and thanks to South Bank. Bob was part of a lot of that grant acquisition, so thanks to him and South Bank for making it all. It's a great asset to the community, and it's gonna be really good.
I had a question with that. We went down there the other night, and the main access, like, it goes through the riverboat parking lot, and the other end, is there gonna be like a stairwell that goes down into it, and then do you have to go on private property to access the one entrance?
So the agreement we've got, so there will be two access points, both the places that you mentioned, down in Queen City Riverboat Site, and on the first SD1 chamber. We're gonna recommend that people enter at the SD1 chamber, because that is public property there. It is private property down by the marina. Bob Nong has been in conversation with us, and he's fine with people accessing the trail at that location, with the exception of evenings when he's extremely busy, which are usually weekend evenings, because I don't think that we, after sunset, too many people down there, so we're gonna encourage people to use the public access point. Right now, they're both kind of temporary until the Queen City Riverboat Site gets developed, and there is some movement on that. I hope to report that back here in the next couple of months. Technically, two access points, but we're gonna encourage the one by the SD1 chamber. It won't be stairs, it's gonna be a ramp, will be accessible there, so. And that's all I have, Mayor, and I'll see later some questions for you.
Any questions for Mr. Giffen? Thank you for your report, sir. Now I'd like to move along to the city attorney's report. Mr. Edge?
Nothing for the report, Mayor.
Now to the department head's report. Mr. Lyles, would you quick forward the report, please?
Mayor, council, we'll receive my report through email. For the month of May, there were 85 letters written with 59 violations and 26 citations. 28 of those letters were for grass, so that's part of the reason for the little increase in May. Forty cases were closed in May, some of those again still through, through the fact that older cases, as I'm finding them, I'm closing them out as well, we'll come up with something else, and a lot of those people are actually, we've seen a lot of stuff going on. A lot of people are out there working on the property and keeping the grass cut, and things are just getting better. Any questions, concerns?
No, I have no concern. I talked to you about it, you said that you had sent a letter at the corner of Seventh and Berry, that apartment or whatever it is, that step.
Yes.
That building, that is not only a hazard to the people going in that building, but it's a hazard if anybody comes around that block there, so if you could expedite that a little bit, I'd appreciate it.
I'll work on it.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Mr. Lyles?
Yeah, I did see, Mr. Lyles, I believe it was in the budget report, the up to the month budget report, Donigan gives out that there were 25 vacant properties registered?
I don't have that, but I'll...
Seventy-five hundred dollars, and I'm figuring 500 apiece. That's great. That's what, that's what this was intended to do, not to generate the money, but to put them on the radar so that public works, first responders know that these places are vacant, and to put some pressure on the property owners, so I appreciate you.
You're working on it.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Lyles. Chief Atkins, our department report, please.
Mayor, we've all should have received my report, I've got a lot to add to that. I will say, the order that was read about protecting Homeland Security, that was for the fire department, we are looking to secure a grant for new gear for every member of the department, so we had, one of the hoops we had to jump through is having this order read and approved by the city, so it's a reason, in fact, that order was written, or read. Beyond that, I have a whole lot to add. I'm now with Michael, working on finalizing our budget, and I will have that to submit to the Fire Department, which we have a Fire Department meeting the 19th, so I'll have the budget to submit and then for approval. But I don't have, excuse me, I have a whole lot more to add.
Chief, can you give us any update on your radio?
So, we're still in a holding pattern. The grants were supposed to start being issued the first of June. Like I said, with the government shutting down in January, they pushed everything back. You should have heard on, in March. So we're just kind of in a holding pattern, hoping to hear something. They started sending out letters of no thank you to end of May, so we have not received one of those letters yet, so that is a little bit of good news, but it's the federal government, so you just...
Will that grant be all of Campbell County?
Yes.
Just the...
It's very good. All the departments and the county went together. They figured that was the best way to probably, to do, secure that grant, so.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else?
Anyone else for Mr. Atkins? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you all.
Chief Hefield, police report, please.
Just a couple things to add. The MIR monthly report, things are up a little bit since it's been more immediately, because the activity's been up. I just want to give kudos to, I don't know if you guys saw that officer gets, we posted it on the Facebook page, you know, that those are the type of officers that we like to see and keep around here. People I didn't know, it was, some kids were out tie-dyeing some shirts, and he stopped by and asked them if they wanted anything or needed anything, and they said, you know, we could use some more shirts to tie-dye, so he went to the store and got some tie, some T-shirts, and bought them back, you know, boxes of ice cream and things like that, and they love that, and so he got kudos from that, somebody posted it, and then I got ahold of it, and, you know, we posted it on our Facebook page, so it was, it's officers like that, so we'd like to keep around here, and we're glad we have.
Great story.
Yep.
You have a lot of cops that do that. I see a lot of cops shooting basketball and...
Oh, yeah, racing, you know, football races, throwing football or shooting basketball when they're out in the community, and, you know, they're just getting involved. Maybe it was with school resource officers, and just everybody we got right now, we got a really good group of guys. How's it going?
We appreciate that.
I have a video of Officer Wilbur jumping rope with the girls.
Officer who? Oh, yeah.
Josh is jumping rope, too.
Yeah.
Singing songs and jumping rope, that's heck of a...
Yeah.
I did have one question for you on your report.
Yeah.
It said that there were 10 missing persons calls?
Yeah, seven of them was the same person. She kept running away and coming back, it's juvenile, we had an issue with her all month of May, where she was running away, coming back, habitual runaway. So, reports tend to add up when they, when we catch them and bring them back, and the next day they run away, and then we catch them, bring them back. Pretty much, we had one of those, one juvenile, so about seven. So that's why that number's a little high from last time.
Any other questions for Mr. Hefield?
Thanks, Chief.
Last, but certainly not least, Mr. Yoder with your economic development report.
Thank you. This is a little selected. Yeah, my computer battery died, I just read off my computer, and so I just ran it out of the house. Thank you, Mayor, council, I've got a road report, throughout the Main Street, what's going on there? I want to talk for a moment about Dayton Flea. We're gonna start up in June, June 15th, have a monthly flea market, parking lot and six, three parking lot, and 600 block, Sixth Avenue. We posted it out on Facebook the other day, we've already got some interest, some crowds and some people going there. So we have a monthly flea market, Saturdays from the 9th, on the third Saturday every month, from June through October, and so that we can bring some excitement downtown. Spaces are $10 each, and if you run electricity, in a few spaces, a little electricity access for $20 each, and we're also trying to reach out to some people, who will do some car use to see if they'd like to set up there, so we'll see what we can be going there. So, if you want to sign up, it's DaytonKentucky.com/Datenflea, or call the office at 491-1600, and ask for me, Bob Yoder. We'll be taking over, at our meeting last month, we talked about, make sure we take over the case of Dayton, working with KYTC and seeing what day we can close down the street, which will be last half of September, so one, a Saturday later. Couple things happening on the Main Street. We'll have new owners on Thursday for 526 Sixth Avenue, that building is purchased, that's the blue building next to the city building.
What's that company called?
They're buying it as an investment property, so they're looking to rent it out, and working with the, they have a tenant in there in the second floor, so they can keep that tenant, they'll keep them in there, if not, they'll probably rehave the second, the second floor apartment. And they'll be coming in, we've already made an appointment to come in Thursday morning to fill out their rental license, so. Really good people, we like them, good neighbors. We'll also have a new business getting ready to come in, two businesses ready to come in, I would say, what's in the next month, it may be five weeks, but it should be soon. One is the coffee shop, this is always, will be opening at 301 Sixth Avenue, so it's gonna be on there, so that'll be good, we're all waiting for that. And another, a new clothing business will be coming in at the old gas station on the corner of Sixth and Main, in the old, the section that was the garage, so they're working on that, so that's good. Our next Main Street meeting will be Tuesday the 25th, at 7:00 p.m. at Fox Barbecue, some of our, some are traditionally, again, of taking the Main Street meetings back out on the street, so we can, hometown here was last month, and next month we'll be in Fox Barbecue. Some ramps, a couple things, we'll cover tomorrow first. There'll be a bar meeting on June 11th at Fox Barbecue, our traditional meeting place, and also check out the Dayton Community News for articles on Star Control Station. We've got some good painting going along Sixth Avenue, and I think, I hope you're watching 1, 2, 3 Sixth Avenue across the riverside, they've taken off a lot of the old aluminum siding in the front, and put the original wood, done some repairs and some paint, found some really nice shingles up on the top of the gable, I thought it was looking a heck of a lot nicer than it did six months ago, I think that's a good example, working with the owner and explaining that no, you couldn't put the new vinyl siding on, that the best bet would be to take it off and see how the wood looked there, and the wood was in pretty good shape. There were whole spaces that were, a couple boards that needed replaced, but for the most part, the wood was in very good shape. It's one of the things about when they cover it, you know, aluminum siding like that, it kind of desert, so when you take it off, it's usually in pretty good shape there, so that's looking good. Talk about grants, applied for another, the Land O' Water Conservation Fund grant, again, trying to get some more funding to reopen the trails at Sargeant Park, so that's two I've applied for that for this year, we'll cross our fingers and see what happens. And I'm, I had with you guys a thing called Walk Day. It's a little thing I've been doing with the Health Department, we got a little grant from them for about $500, and it's, this will be going up on the website. We do have a lot of walking trails and walking buildings, we've talked about, Riverfront Commons being instructed right now, we put in the sidewalk, it'd be Bloomberg Walkway Park, or the trail on top of Levy, you know, being there, and we put in, last year, we put that sidewalk for the connection from the Levy Trail into Gilton Park, like what Sargeant Park, the Jamestown Pike Park project. I do want to say, Kathy, I got an email from KYTC, I've been bugging them and bugging them, and the person I worked with found out where our right-of-way request had been solved, and had sent me an email last week saying, I should be hearing something great soon. Doesn't mean I lit up on the pressure, that I don't keep on bugging them, but our contract is signed, we're all ready to go. I just need the letter from the state to say, hey, your right-of-way plan is approved, so. It wasn't us, it's somewhere down in Frankfurt, it got stuck on somebody's desk, and they found it, they didn't tell me where, but they said they found out where it was stuck. I understand, I, I feel the same frustrations you do, you know, it's not people like me every day, I feel that a lot. And Walk Day, I'll talk about this a little bit, one thing we wanted to talk about is some walking trails using our sidewalk, and work, and what we have here. So there's gonna be two, I give documents, what we'll do is we'll put it signage, they'll start out at the, we'll start at the one o'clock wise, one o'clock clockwise, one we're calling the Heritage Trail, takes you down through the historic district, to about from the former more, Berry, to Vine, Vine, to Fourth, back down to Fourth, and back up, so it's about a one-mile trail. So I'm going one way, and the other one we're calling the Levy Trail, the Levy Trail starts the same way, goes Sixth to O'Fallon, O'Fallon up to the Levy Trail, Levy Trail on top of the Riverfront, down into Gilton Park, and that's around through there. That's about a 1.8 mile trail, try to get something close to two miles. I've got plans, we'd love to do one, I'd like to call it a hill climber, when the State Public School Project is done, that takes you up the staircase on Dayton Road, up and around and down through Jamestown Park, for the more adventurous, and if somebody wants, let's say, a more active trail experience, because that would be about a fair amount of help. But, working with the Health Department, put together about a thousand dollar budget for this, 720 of it's for signage, they're giving us $500, and so it's something that I think we can get up this summer, most. For the most part, we'll be using signs that already exist on the street, and put a couple signs on the levee, so it'll be marked, and we'll do a visual tape, we'll have signage like this, that says, you know, Heritage Walk, and there'll be arrows, it's hard to which way to go, so you can follow it around. And I really like this one, walking is an exercise everybody can do, and the more people we have walking in a community, the safer the community is, it's eyes on the street faces. I think a project we can talk about, create physical activity in health, and also, you know, create more of a neighborly atmosphere, so. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Yoder?
It's all good things, Bob. Appreciate the update.
Moving along, correspondence. Correspondence from administration? Any petitions? Oh, petitions. Unfinished business, would you like to bring up some unfinished business?
Man...
Listen.
I want to remind Michael and everyone that, and I know it's up to the developer on the river, but the development down by Manhattan Harbor, as was told to us, that we're gonna start leasing out at the end of the month, at the end of the year, right?
The tapestry?
Sometimes you're right, we're told at the end of the year. That's gonna bring a lot of traffic into the city of Dayton, I think we ought to remind the developer that that ramp at Berry Street needs to be thought about, and thought about heavily, and the finishing the road to go through to Manhattan Harbor. I understand, and I know the reason they buy the roads not finished yet, because they want a lot of heavy equipment on there while they're finishing tapestry, but they need to come up with a game plan, because when they start leasing those out, you're only gonna have one egress, ingress, and ingress, and that's gonna be at O'Fallon. So, it would be nice if they could think about Berry Street, the ramp there, because that'll, that'll take some of the flow off of O'Fallon. So, Michael, if you could put some feelers out, some words out to...
Which developers responsible for the ramp?
Right now, it's the...
that'll, that'll take some of the flow off of O'Fallon. So, Michael, if you could put some field results, some words out to...
Which developer is responsible for the ramp?
Right now, it's the lead developer on the development agreement, which is 50% Nelson Stark, 50% David Potter.
Can I get them to come to the next council meeting and give us some data, or please do that?
I can, I can do that if that's what you want, or I can, I can just bring back, I can have a meeting with that and bring back what they say, whatever you want. Try to get them here if that's what you want, or I can just save some time, maybe just a bit of information. I'll probably get you a bit of information before, and as we get here.
I think the problem that I see is, yes, they're going to start leasing those out, and I'm concerned about that, but I'm more concerned when they start renting them out. And so, you can lease some mountains right up like move there for six months, so, it might be six months over a year, but a year's not a lot of time when we're talking about the flow of traffic down there.
Oh, Billy has stole my thunder.
Sorry about that, Joe.
No, 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 because we brought it up before about that ramp, but, you know, that's going to be, the way they're going, we're going to have five, 600 new residents within the next year, all in that one concentrated spot. And that Berry ramp, we never made that a condition of approving that project, but maybe in hindsight, we should have. I think along with Berry ramp, we got to look again at O'Fallon Avenue between Fifth and Sixth, that seven-way intersection in that narrow lane there, you've got, it's impossible to get in and out of there, there'll be delays, you got parking on the one side. I think we need to revisit that whole thing, and make that a condition of any more improvements down there. Traffic flow is going to be an issue.
If it's, if it's all right with you, I think it'll be, I'll be able to generate some information real quick, or I just maybe set up a meeting here in the next couple of weeks with them. I know Dave is not in town, but Mark Stark is, and usually is, so, I can set something up, I'll bring the hammer, the man with me, and we'll see if we can put some pressure on it, at least see where they stand, put some pressure on it, and I can probably get back to you all in the next couple of weeks on an update, and then, at the next council meeting, we can talk about it, we can look more depth, but it'd be a quicker solution to at least getting an honest conversation going about what our concerns are, and your all's concerns are, and I can bring that back. I'd probably appreciate a couple of weeks.
Be proactive rather than waiting until we have a problem down there, just to get, figure out what their plans are, everything else.
Traffic's an issue there, Michael, but one of the concerns that I have is, is a public safety issue. If, if somebody in one of those apartments has a medical issue, which requires attendance of an ambulance, going either direction is probably not as quick as going straight down Berry and getting to them. So, this, and Mr. Burns and Mr. Yoder are correct, that this needs to be a priority, that we get this done ASAP, so that we can, A, address the traffic issue, but also, more important, make sure that we're providing the best emergency services to those who are running from us, or are buying, whatever the bill is.
And if you can, when you get on your meeting, make sure you, the minor about finishing that road down there. Not, like I said, I know they don't want to put heavy equipment on that road, I mean, that gravel road right now, but, when they start leasing that out and start renting it out, that gravel road has to be finished.
Well, I think I've had this conversation with some of you all, the last time I had a serious conversation with them was they wanted to finish the road first, and then come back and do the connection. And I think I speak for everybody here, but I think the priority for us is flip, that we can go see Berry Street connect and go there first, and then whenever they want to finish, you know, the connection is, is not of huge importance to us, so, we'll just stress that.
I want to also take some pressure off the Fourth Street, if you're forcing them all to go out on the east end, coming on the Fourth Street.
Well, and, we can also, I've spoken with the developer of Tapestry several times, and it's a much better marketing tool for that, and I think if Berry Street exists...
Absolutely. And for our central business district.
We'll make sure that we get, at least some input from them, that we can use them in the future.
Any other comments on the Berry Street access ramp? Is there any other unfinished business that we'd like to bring up?
Michael, I thought they were supposed to, I get that parking lot, I don't know if they...
They are, they're waiting just for, the ground's pretty wet, and a lot of hillside runoff comes down there, so they're going to wait until it dries out. I spoke with progress yesterday, so they're still going to get to it. I also want to make sure that they wanted to do it quickly this spring, I don't want to get an inferior product, so they're going to wait until it's dry, or drier.
A little more, I observe. Michael, you and I talked about this earlier, just to make it a matter of public record, with urban terraces. It was up there in the last rainstorm, and watching all the water coming down and everything. You indicated that Water District or SD1 had planned on doing some work up there, and that's when we would repave it and put in new curving and whatnot. Could you give an update on it?
Sure. Both SD1 and the water company are doing work up there. SD1's looking and focusing on the Belmont section, and the Northern Water District is doing urban terraces. The Stormwater Task Force met with SD1 last week, and what we talked about there was focusing on their, SD1's project on Belmont, and we submitted some paperwork to them on Friday to get some additional work done while they've got the road open, and that's putting in new catch basins at different locations that can catch the stormwater. We've kind of got a plan internally between Phil and Rick and myself on a couple of other things that we're going to ask them to do while they're, while they're out there that we think can help, so that, we think that's going to help solve some of the icing that we saw this winter on that section. The Northern Water Side is a little bit less good news. We did meet them out there, and we tried to push really hard on curving on that side of the road, that the water jumps over, it's not even like a curve there. And, in some parts, I think we got their attention, and I think they're going to do what they can to do that, but the water main, that they're actually going to be touching is actually, on most sections is on the other side of the road, so they're not going to be tearing out as much of that, if you're going down the hill, the right side, the east side of the road as we had hoped. So, I think that's going to be something we're going to have to take a look at on our end, and either if and when they're there, or just kind of budget it out and get some bids for fall and spring, if we want to make that kind of a project. So, I guess, short, we're going to get a lot of SD1, and I think we're going to get on the Water District just because of where the water main is, or I think it's not, they're not going to be tearing up that side of the road as much.
Well, I mean, there's water coming out of the ground, even when it's not raining, so that indicates a, obviously, an infrastructure problem underneath, whether it's SD1 or Water District. Will they be, I presume they'll just be doing like a three-foot wide cut down urban terraces then? That's all they do?
Well, I mean, that's, yes, that's, I mean, that's, in essence, that's their plan. Now, the argument that we're making is that their product has caused so much undermining in the road, that they should just be looking at the three-wide long trench, they should, some areas that they're planning to excavate the entire roadside. And that's where we're going to be able to get some help from them in going over to that east side.
Right.
That's where we had some records, it said, "Look, there's clearly an interior issue on the east side, even though we know your water line is broken on the west side." It's just not that case in the whole way, so they're, they're only going to, at this point, they're going to fix what's undermined, and they agreed to do that. Until they open up the road, I mean, we know where some of the undermining is, there may be more, there may be not as much as we had thought in some areas, but until they open up the road, they really aren't going to know. We did meet them, and we did make that pitch for them. Wherever the road is undermined, they obviously, it's their responsibility to fill that, and then while they add it, if they could coordinate with us on adding some curving, if we could help the storm on that side of the road.
Curving and sidewalks, I know the sidewalks of the property owner's responsibility, but we've paved over that so many times, and it's like putting icing on a slope, I mean, it just keeps sliding down. If, if it is ever repaved, that has to be milled way down, because like, in some spaces, in some parts, there is no room between the tar, between the asphalt and the top of the curb. I think we need to also look at, can we do some type of cooperative with the property owners, especially on that east side, to say, "You got to put in a new sidewalk, you got to put in a new curb." I know we're responsible for the curbs, correct? In conjunction with that, maybe a 50/50, something along those lines? I mean, it's going to help their property values by eliminating that runoff, especially with their driveway cuts. I think we need to plan on that.
Well, I don't know, yeah, I agree with you on that, and I think we're going to maybe try to structure something that the, what I'm worried about on urban terraces is what we have on a lot of the roads, that we can't mill down very far, because it's, it's not very far until we get to dirt, so it would require substantial amount of more excavation, which obviously has a lot of cost. We had that problem with Belmont, or not Belmont, on Fairview, a couple years ago, where we wanted to add curving, and, I mean, there was just no way we were going to possibly be able to afford excavation up there. So, we did the best that we could to get some rolled curving up there. I'm afraid that we're going to find the same thing on, on urban terraces. The only saving grace may be that it's so far washed out underneath, that it may be irrelevant in some areas, and we may be able to, to go lower than we would have if we had to excavate, so. It's just, there's a lot of unknowns, and we're not going to know until they open up the road.
And when is their plan to open up the road?
Well, it was June, but I don't think that's going to happen. Both, both projects, I think, are going to get pushed probably more into July at this point, and it could go farther than that.
Okay. And the other issue was on the roof for the city building, the current city building. Did we address the issue with that roof, or?
Well, I've got in the budget for, for some repairs of that. The last repair we did was more so on leakage from, not the roof, but the AC units. That was fixed, but I think just, was it two weeks ago, maybe it was even last week, and I think the man got a little bit in his office and Tony's in there.
Very good, yeah.
So, we think it's, that portion lately's been coming from the, the AC units, but I put money in the budget for the roof in general, so we're just going to take another look at it.
Because what I've heard from contractors and builders and everything is, you can't get a contractor right now, they're all up in Dayton, Ohio, because of the storm damage up there. So, roofers, any kind of construction or anything right now, you'll be waiting six to eight months before any of them are available. So, again, I hope you're being proactive on that. Thank you.
I got one more question. Since KZF did such a nice job on that report, word will stand with option B, option A, whatever.
I received the email that I sent out to you all, I believe it was yesterday, that gave a, at least at this point, our best, or I guess our firmest price that we've received from that entity. I held on to it for a couple of weeks, because there was some open-ended language in the email about discussions that needed to be had on their end about the price, but I've called five, six times, I've emailed five, six times, and I haven't gotten any responses, so. I wanted, since KZF, the KZF meeting came and went, I wanted to get that email out that I've been holding on to, so. That's all the information I have, is what they sent me in that email. I haven't had any direct discussion with them since, so.
So, what direction are we going to go? Mayor?
I'm still waiting to get a final price, or at least a close to price where the other seller is looking to go. After that, I want to do a, a evaluation of, with KZF's information that we, that we have, on what would take to turn that building into, into operational space for, for police and administration. And then after that, we'll be able to make a decision whether which direction we want to go.
How much longer are we going to wait for the second entity?
It's, it's a real estate...
Four doors, six months, three months, five months?
Till we, till we get an answer from them. I mean, they gave us a soft answer. I want a firm answer, and I've been speaking with some other folks about this project, and they said that there's an opportunity that we can get a better answer. So, once we get that number, we'll, we'll bring it back to council, and we can vote on, on moving forward on, I expect it to be next month or so. And then we can move forward on finding out the total cost for that project, and then we can make a decision on which way the council wants to go. Of course. Any other unfinished business? Any new business? Mr. Corbett?
Can we look at the 100 block of Fifth Street, Fifth Avenue, right behind the Dollar Store? There isn't any of lights, you know, the overhead lights, and there's a lot of kids on that block. And in the evenings, if I don't go up, walk in or bind to get out, I go into the light at O'Fallon, and it's very, very hard to see, there's not a light on that block. Looking to see it.
Mike, can you contact them and see what we can do with that?
Yeah, I mean, based off experience, we could, if it's something we wanted to implement, they could probably do a, I mean, they would give us a cost estimate, we would have to fund, but, I don't think they voluntarily could. I'll ask them, but I'm pretty sure that would be on us to...
I mean, there's, there's a lot of kids on that block, and they play basketball out there every night, which is a good thing, but it's very difficult to see them, because there's not any lights.
I'll see what the process is.
Amy, are you talking about the entrance, is it's right there by the entrance way to Manhattan Harbor?
No, it's the middle of the block.
But if you had it at the entrance way, it was shot down below the block, is that what you're saying, you argue you want it in the middle block?
Well, I think it needs to be in the middle block, because you got, you got some at the end, you can't see, you can't see them, so there's some at Manhattan Harbor, there's something there.
Okay, very good.
And there's nothing at the other end of it.
Very good.
And then, I have some dates. We're not going to, the Civic Club is not going to have the kite festival this year, we did not get the grant, and the kite festival kind of has become quite costly, so we're just going to skip that this year. Tended of dates for Music Fest are September the 7th, and the Tasted Date, Tended of Date is September 28th. And then I've talked to Rick Frank, and he always has Song Fest, and that's going to be September 21st. What does he have to do to get the park preserved, or is this sufficient?
Civil request?
Yeah, if he just kind of texts me...
Okay, does he, he asked me to come? Did he already change that, because I only have my own calendar for the birthday? Yeah, he did. He said he hadn't contacted him back yet, but it's September 21st. I'll tell him to call you again.
He just fills out a special event, happens to say...
He had already, yeah, filled out one. That's all I have.
Anyone else with new business? I would like to see, as I said, we're going to have five, 600 new people moving in here within a year. I'd like to see the Main Street Board, maybe in conjunction with the Civic Activities Board. Somebody's got to do this. We're going to have, these are going to be all new people moving into Dayton. I doubt very much that 100 of them will be Dayton residents moving down, are these going to be all new people? Not to pull the welcome wagon out, but we need something for these people to market our, to highlight what we have downtown, to, here's your police non-emergency number, here are your, here's the city website, et cetera, et cetera. Register your car under Dayton, so that we're getting the taxes out of it, I mean, don't put that in there. I'd like to see some kind of initiative with the Main Street Board, and maybe even the Civic Activities Board, to make these people feel welcome, work with the team that's marketing. These are pros, they're going to be marketing these apartments and condos down there. Find out what their target market is, how they are advertising Dayton, Kentucky, and leverage that. We need to be ready for this flood coming in.
Bob, I know Donna has provided me with some previous things that we've done in the past of a welcome documents that, that she provided me with, it has a police, fire, all restaurants, all those good things in it, garbage days, because you're always confused when you move to someplace new. If, I'll provide that with you, if you can please update that, because it's probably, what, 10 years old or so?
Please, maybe please.
So, if you could get that to whomever's renting out these, and selling these places, and get those to folks, that'd be a good first step.
And get it on the city website. People are going to be looking at the city website when they're looking at those apartments and condos down there, to see what we're all about.
Sure.
Maybe the time for a little revamp of some of the structural posts on it.
I'd like to piggyback on that as just even trying to find a place that we can focus on some marketing for our city, because if all of us wanted brand-new city building, it's only dependent on these places selling. And if they don't sell, then we don't have any of this great promised money to us, so, I think... So I think actually looking into finding a budget, to have professionals put together something for us that would add on to even this welcome thing, if we have a new branding, something that kind of sets us apart, I think that'll go a long way, and I don't know where we can find some room in the budget, but I think we actually have to do some real strong marketing. I think nobody knows where we are. I own a business here, and I struggle daily fighting against Dayton, Ohio. I mean, it's, I love Dayton, Kentucky, but it's a shame that they named it after a town that was so close to us. But that's a real struggle that I think we really need to combat. I'm not saying change the name of Dayton, but we really need to, like, put out a call to set us apart and say, hey, we're over here, because they're not gonna find us on their own. And I don't know if that's any part of support, or if it's a committee, or if it's straight hiring somebody outside. We have a bunch of creatives in the city that have been more than happy to volunteer their efforts to help towards this, so if we could start some initiative to, pretty much a rebrand would be great.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, if you wanna help take the lead, it'd probably be better, you know, just face up your connections, if you wanna start putting together some ideas and give us some numbers, instead of me just trying to figure out who to call. We can at least start there, we can figure out what some of that stuff may cost, and, you know, what type of free helping we get, and we can figure out what the budget like that would need to be.
Yep.
So I'd be happy to utilize my resources, but if you wanna reach out to some people and go for it, and include me in on anything you want to, if we arrive at a number, I don't know.
I want to help out, too. Just let me know.
Do we have any idea who they're gonna be marketing these things through, or? I think we've got one developer, and a construction company, but the developer's the one putting the money in. Who are they going to use as a tool to market?
Gateways is gonna use Town as their leasing, sorry, I'm assuming through that contractor's gonna get some marketing money that kind of suit Town to do, I'm not quite sure.
We need to be given the same message, because it was pretty embarrassing a couple weeks ago when they had one of the houses on Manhattan Boulevard listed as Bellevue, Kentucky.
What, they did, what was that?
Yeah, yeah, they did.
On like, a what?
On, I believe it was on Real Estate, yeah. And the reason it was given to me was because people know where Bellevue is, but nobody knows where Dayton is. Fair point when you don't live here. So I'd like, I'll dovetail with what Scott says, I'd be glad to help, too.
Yeah, and if we can coordinate the efforts with the developers who are already gonna be spending money, we just basically have to feed them some good materials that we wanna be represented by, so.
Well, I think it's just a combination of, I mean, some of the stuff that we've thrown out here tonight, just need to figure out on a channel it all into a constructive platform. You all have the connections, maybe to have those conversations and get those numbers quicker than I would, so if you wanna go ahead and do that, I'll just feed the stuff to me and what kind of channel.
Should it be under the auspices, I don't know if this is your call or the mayor's call, should it be under the auspices of one of the boards, or?
Would it be under the auspice of the Economic Development Committee? For rebranding and marketing?
We've done this with Redknot, Redknot has reached out to us and given this information to Redknot, so we can reach out to developers, and Redknot is already selling properties and doing that, and getting that information there, so I would expect, as Tapestry and Gateway Locks get to the marketing point, we're ready to hand them that information. I'll look at what we've done in the past and make sure we update and have it all ready for that.
Bob, if you could please provide, Mr. Meara and Mr. Basler, the list of those evidence that they're marketing through Redknot, through Manhattan Harbor, any other projects that are going on in the city. I think it's pretty important that we push hard on that to sell Dayton, Kentucky. If you can get on that, I appreciate that. Anyone else around to finish business? I do have two things I wanna bring up. Last month, we had a visit from the 2020 Census Board, where they're looking to get a better count of who actually lives in Dayton, and a better understanding of the demographics that live here. I've reached out to Michael. Michael believes that, you know, with a couple of us representing on that board, we can give a better count. So I know he's agreed to it. I'm agreeing to being a part of that promotion committee. I talked about bringing up Jay Brewer from the schools to reach out to those students and their families, and I wanted to see if anybody else on city council would be interested in participating in the 2020 Census Board. All right, so we got Jeff Volter, Tammy Cornet would like to. You better take notes, I think. Anybody else? No, we're all on log fours, I understand, so.
If you need a third, and as long as it's not during the workday, I can help.
Ms. Cornet and Mr. Volter, for definite, if we need a third, Mr. Meara would just make it, so it's me, you, Brewer, Tammy, and Jeff, and Joey. The last thing I have is a question for our attorney. This is a fun one. Animal trapping, how, how do we regulate, or is there a regulation for animal trapping humanely, not through sperry, in the city of Dayton, Kentucky? Or do you know?
I had a conversation with Terry today, so if you don't wanna.
Oh, yeah. This is included all the time, so you can help.
I'm not pulling on the order, I'm not gonna know that.
What I found out today was that it's against the law to trap wildlife and relocate, but it's not against the law for the property owner. Now, this is, I don't have my notes, it's not, it's, what's the word I'm looking for? Hazardous wildlife, or maybe a base of wildlife? Not cats, we had that problem, but.
We're not gonna cat, we're brown.
To catch and relocate is against the law, to catch and kill on your property, or these wildlife animals is legal.
So you can kill them, but you can't relocate them?
Yes.
That's great.
And I have no idea where she's pointing from.
There are places, I don't have any related information, I'm not quoting any.
Can we relocate certain hazardous animals to the county?
No.
Do they take?
No, at the animal shelter?
Correct. They don't want any groundhogs?
They don't want.
Why?
Just to know for some reason.
Sure it's not the other way around, you can relocate.
Terry Baker told me today that it's illegal to transport because of disease control, so if they have rabies, and you keep moving them around, they can't control where that's going as well. But if it's your property, and I'm using the term, oh, but it wasn't invasive wildlife or hazardous, but if it's something in that category, if it's your property, so in this case it's your city property, we're able to trap and kill. They recommended that's not a good PR slogan, but according to Terry, that is legal.
Bill, you sound like you want to talk about.
I just wanna ask one question, you said you can trap and kill. I know we have an ordinance in the city, David, you ain't allowed to shoot up a gun in the city at Dayton.
But you're allowed to have a trap.
How are you gonna kill these animals humanely?
Have you ever seen a spear trap?
That's far more.
It was not recommended on how to dispose of.
I'm not recommending, I'm just saying.
You know, it's, I think groundhogs and insects are hazardous to our citizens, but I don't know how you're gonna humanely do this. I seen on, next thing you're gonna tell me, you had a deer down on Berry Street, what are you gonna do about the deer population?
There's been that argument, too, sir.
But like, the city can't go on private property and do it, and a citizen can't go on the city property and do it. If it's something on the city property, it's something the city personnel would have to, but as dumb as it sounds, you can catch and re-release on the property, they said that's like piak transport.
Got it. So the problem with the garden where a live trap was removed, does that mean that the city would then have to place the live trap and then murder said groundhog?
Yes.
Wouldn't put him on the tank.
Well, that'd be a transport relocate.
I thought you brought this up with Monks is in here.
Oh, I'll get hold of it, I'm sure. It's just a conversation that was brought up to me today. Obviously, we're trying to keep the community garden as producing as possible, and so that's.
I'm not gonna endorse any of those statements as legally factual at this point.
Oh, you were briefed on it.
Well, I don't know if that, I don't wanna, you know, endorse that that's actually the law. What I can tell you, the law is, number one, don't shoot guns off the city, that's illegal. Number two, if you abuse an animal, which means you intentionally cause injury to an animal, or you deprive an animal of water, food, and shelter, that is a chargeable offense, as Chief Abbeau's had to deal with that once or twice in his career. Me and my vets are in there. Then outside of that, I will, as to the wildlife, it's not owned by an individual, it's usually just a community item that's there, it doesn't belong to the city, it doesn't belong to any particular property owner, and you are allowed to, any wildlife that is dangerous, and I can affirm that part of it is, if you have some kind of dangerous wildlife, you're allowed to take measures to get rid of that wildlife by killing it. As long as you do it, you may, don't let it suffer.
Yes, okay. You're gonna be good at detailing. All right, so.
The transport part, I can't promise you.
So we can't transport, it's kind of a wonder.
That's what was told to me, that it has to do with disease control.
All right.
We can also check fish and wildlife.
Ooh, fish and wildlife, do you think about those guys? Maybe they want some groundhogs.
That would probably be the more optimal scenario, it's, they'll probably have better information on that.
All right, do we have any other new business? Is there a reason to enter executive session?
No, Mayor.
No executive session? So with all these lines checked off, I would like to take a motion, or ask for a motion for a German.
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Volter and seconded by Mr. Lam. All in favor?
Aye.
Good day.